Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, March 23rd, 2023 regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. This meeting is now called to order. I ask you please stand down for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. We do have some special VIP guests with us here on this evening. Now I ask that Dr. Bracy will come forth now to introduce them.
Good evening, everyone. I know we can do better than that. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, that's great. Sounds much better. Welcome to our board meeting this evening. I have the honor of recognizing, first of all, Waters Middle School tonight for providing the pledge of allegiance and the student statement. So as I call the students' name, I would like for you all to come forward. First, I think I will have Mr. Harris, if you will come forward at this time as I call your students. The first, Larry McNeil, who will provide the pledge. And as he comes, let me read you some information about Larry. Larry is an eighth grader at Waters Middle School where he has an impressive record of achievement. He's an honor roll student and has maintained his status also while playing on both the school soccer and volleyball teams. At school, Larry is a member of the FBLA and he also serves on the school's morning announcement team. In the community, he has found opportunities to give his time, including volunteering at a haunted house in the fall. In the future, Larry is shooting for the stars, quite literally. He wants to become an astronomer in his career. Larry is here tonight. Yeah. Larry is here tonight with his parents, Larry McNeil and Frances Taylor. And parents, if you are present, please stand. Now providing the school statement, Jalen Lassane. Jalen is an eighth grade student at Waters. She has made either the honor roll or principals list during her time at school and is part of the school's 600 club and gifted and talented program. She is a member of the school soccer team, volleyball team, track team, and scholastic ball team. In addition to her being on the FBLA, NEL, and my own superintendent's student advisory group, Jalen is involved with her church and the Saturday Academy for positive self-development. For her career, she wants to be an aerospace engineer at NASA as well as an entrepreneur. She's here with her parents, Tony and Andrea Lassane. Will you all please stand? This is the first time that Jalen and I have met in person because our meetings thus far have been Zoomed, but I can tell you she definitely contributes to our group. And one of the first things I had to learn about her that she wants to make sure her name is called, is pronounced correctly. So did I get it right tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, well, I'm glad to finally meet you in person. So at this time, Mr. Harris, you can stand beside him. And if you want to invite any of your other administrators up with you at the time, please do so. All right, at this time, Larry, if you will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And parents, please feel free to come up front if you want to get a better picture of the students. Jalen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, when Mr. Harris asked me, oh, okay, sure. When Mr. Harris asked me to represent my school, I was like, just what I've been waiting for. So, um, first thing I would like to say about my school is, um, Mr. Harris is a phenomenal principal. There's never a time that he's just in his office sitting down. He's watching out for the students and he's gonna ask you, hey, uh, where are we supposed to be? But that's Mr. Harris for you. And then we have our assistant principals, Ms. Pierce and Ms. Hatcher, and they look out for the young folks as they should. And if you mess up, they don't hold it against you. They put it behind you and they move on. And then we have our parent liaison. She is well engaged with the students and the parents. She bridges the gap between home and school. And she is the most informative person I know. And then we have our communities, communities and school coordinator at our school, Ms. Ivy. And if you're having a bad day, if you, after talking to her, you feel like you just left a five-star therapist in Jersey, like, she's that good. And then we have our custodians. We have to show love to our custodians because they work day and night, literally. And then we have our teachers. They teach with a passion. They teach like they want to be there. And if you don't understand something, they go back and they work, they work you through it. They make sure that you understand. And then my school, it has a variety of opportunities. But the students, we have to be committed. We have to be reliable and held accountable for our actions. Dr. King said, you don't have to see the whole staircase. You have to take the first step. And that's what we have to do as students, take the first step. Now, I'm not saying my school's five-star on Yelp because I don't know, but it's a five-star school to me. Thank you.
Hold, 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 one second, one moment. Dr. Harris, one moment, one moment.
Dr. Cotton is coming down to, to present something for both of you all at this time.
Well, on behalf of Portsmouth School Board, I want to thank you all for coming and sharing with us tonight. So here's a token of our appreciation, and you all keep up the wonderful work that you're doing. Thank you.
And I just want to say also, I appreciate your authenticity in your statement and your talking about your school and your administrative team. I'm not sure how much Mr. Harris paid you to say that about him, but, 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 I'm just kidding, but you did a great job. And thank you for just sharing your heart and many times, there's nothing wrong with it, they read these, these speeches to us, but you spoke from your heart and I really appreciate you doing that. Larry, thank you for, for your bravery coming to do this. You're gonna be an astronomer, wow. Maybe the first to come from Portsmouth, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to that, to see what it is you do. And don't forget to come back and share what you're doing with students once you make it to be, to be in a popular astronomist.
I'll make sure.
Thanks so much. All right. Any other board members have anything else before we move on? I'm sorry, Dr. Cotton, you have to follow those phenomenal students, but agenda item 3.5 is our school board mission statement. Dr. Cotton.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item 3.6, attendance, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson.
Here.
Mrs. Boone.
Present.
Dr. Cotton.
Present.
Mrs. Futrell.
Here.
Mrs. Schumake.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Here.
Dr. Patillo.
Here.
Eight members present, one member absent.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.7, consideration of the agenda for March 23rd, 2023. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Futrell. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Boone.
Yes.
Dr. Cotton.
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Dr. Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1, student representative report, Ms. Atkins.
Give me a second while I pull it up, sorry, guys. Oh, my gosh. Okay. All righty. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, Chairman Dr. Patillo, and Vice Chair Atkinson, and members of the board and guests. I hope everyone is well. I would like to first say Happy Women's History Month. We have so many great women in the city, including our board members, and I'd just like to give a special shout out to you guys. You do so much for us and we're so grateful for you. My co-representative and I have been conducting research throughout Portsmouth with multiple focus groups with students ranging from kindergarten to 12th grade. Results will be shared at the next meeting as we are still conducting results. We're asking them about their experience at school, if they like school, what can we change for them, are they comfortable, and things like that. I'd also like to give a shout out to three of Portsmouth's very own students who are in competition for $5,000 access scholarship. The students are Layar Wan, Janeia Cooper, and myself, Nae Shere Atkins. You guys can go ahead and vote for the students on accesscollege.org/vote. You have until April 15th. You can vote every day. So I just want to give a shout out to them for making it to the second round because the first round was tough. But that's all I have for our meeting agenda today.
Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you.
Agenda item 5.1 is consideration of a resolution recognizing Public School Volunteer Week. Dr. Cromartie.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Bracy, members of the school board, I present to you tonight, first, a resolution acknowledging our school volunteers. Whereas school volunteers are partners in education, helping us achieve our shared goal of making Portsmouth's public schools the very best for each of our students. And whereas volunteers generously share their time and talents in our schools and offices, making lasting impressions in the lives of our city's youth. And whereas volunteers diligence and exemplary contributions are models for all who wish to serve, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board extend enormous gratitude to our volunteers and partners for their service to and advocacy of Portsmouth's children. And be it further resolved that the division personnel be encouraged to observe Public School Volunteer Week during the period April 17th through 21st, 2023, collectively demonstrating our profound gratitude to this fine group of individuals and organizations. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be archived as part of the school board's official minutes.
Thank you, sir. Entertaining a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Schumake, second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Agenda item 5.2, consideration of a resolution recognizing School Library Month. Dr. Cromartie.
Thank you, sir. Whereas April 2023 has been designated the 38th Annual School Library Month, and whereas school libraries provide resources for teachers and students that advance knowledge and personal growth, and whereas school libraries accommodate technological and print materials reflecting the ideals and values of a progressive society, illuminating diverse ethnic, political, and social groups and their respective contributions to the United States. And whereas school libraries encourage children to read for pleasure, meeting, excuse me, meeting individual abilities and varied interests, establishing a fun and safe place for students, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board declares the month of April as School Library Month, calling upon school administrators, teachers, students, and families to recognize and support our school's libraries in the month of April and throughout the year. And be it further resolved that this resolution be archived as part of the school board's official minutes.
Thank you, sir. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Schumake, second by Ms. Thomas. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Boone.
Yes.
Dr. Cotton.
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Dr. Patillo.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item 6.1 is public comment, non agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
As part of the school division's dedication to full transparency and collaboration in decision-making, the school board of the city of Portsmouth allocates time for public comment at every regular meeting of the month. I'm sorry, I lost my space. If you wish to address the school board, you must register with the clerk of the board ahead of the scheduled meeting start time. During public comment, each speaker will have five minutes to share their comments with board members. Speakers are not allowed to yield their time to another speaker, and they are not to make any formal resolutions, declarations, or proclamations as part of their comments. Speakers are reminded to maintain decorum and respect while addressing the board. Specifically, no individual personnel, student, or family should be named in comments as speakers are at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers. A written copy of speakers' comments can be left with the clerk of the board, and any matter required or response will be directed to the superintendent and school administration to address as needed. As the board opens public comment, the audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. First speaker is Ms. Guanda Marshall.
Is Ms. Marshall present?
Okay. This is Brenda Joseph.
One suggestion, y'all need to go back to having board meetings at some schools sometime because walking up them six flights of steps is getting to me. I've been trying to get an appointment with Dr. Bracy since January. Haven't got it yet. I went to Churchland Middle School Monday morning at 8:27. The doors was propped open. Three or four of us went in. I guess you don't know that it was a shooting there a couple years ago and they shot some cars up in the parking lot at Churchland Middle School. It was unsafe for everybody in that building. Now, my problem is, uh, I had a meeting for this child. And I made a comment that her father's side does nothing for her. Well, he took offense to that and canceled the meeting. And I'm asking for another MDR meeting for her because it's not right. He said she had been doing good, so he let her sit in the office for 90 minutes and not go to gym one day. Next day for gym, he suspended her because she wouldn't go to gym. That's not right for the child. In far as that parking lot that y'all are putting in, that Churchland Academy, uh, what y'all gonna do when the first child gets hit and killed? Because that's gonna happen. In far as naming all these schools, y'all should have not changed all these schools' names and put the money into the school system because John Tyler was always gonna be John Tyler. Howland Bittmore was always gonna be Howland Bittmore. And James Hurst is always gonna be Howland Bittmore. And management should never have been changed to Wilson McGinn where. The only school that I would recommend, and hopefully one day y'all change it, and that's Lakeview. Lakeview should be Marlon Randall's Elementary. She done more for this school system than anybody else I ever known. But when I called Churchland Middle School to talk to somebody and they won't answer the phone, I even called down here and got downtown to call the school and they still don't answer. You have caller ID so you know I'm calling. Instead of saying, she's gonna call to answer, why don't you answer the first time? But I want another MDR meeting for her. And now I have her on homebound. Does she have to work today? No. Four assignments that she should have had today, she did not have. Something needs to be done about Churchland Middle School. I'm so glad it's her last year there. And hopefully Churchland High School is gonna be better because Churchland Middle has been terrible for her. And yes, she wants her name said right too. That's her right to have her name pronounced right. And that upsets her if you don't pronounce her name right. And it's not that hard to say. But I know I'm wasting my time, so, but I was supposed to be here in February, but I couldn't come in February. But anyway, hopefully, I'm waiting for that meeting, another MDR meeting.
Thanks so much.
Mr. Vernon Crump.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent, Staff. My name is Vernon C. Crump Jr. I reside at 4732. Mallard Crescent in this city. Good evening.
Good evening.
I deep, I am deeply concerned by some of the members of the Republican Party in this country who have decided to devalue the accomplishments of African-Americans that African-Americans have made. It appears that they want to sanitize the version of this country's history. We must continue to resist these efforts. Also, I think it is important, we recognize some of the trailblazers that have made significant contributions right here in the city of Portsmouth. To that end, I am recommending that the school board consider the name-changing of some of the schools in the city to recognize the legacy of some of our community, of some of our prominent, prominent African-American citizens. I do not think that this, the location of, of communities, naming of schools does not, does anything to inspire our youth. We must try to elevate their aspirations. Some of them are committing all kinds of crime, destroying each other's lives. I think it would help for them to see that there are African-Americans who are, who have made significant accomplishments and naming and, or renaming some of the schools would have positive effect on the education experience of our young people. Therefore, I am humbly asking the board to make these changes. P.S. P.S., some names I have in mind are Ms. Marilyn Branda, who was a counselor, administrator, and a principal, and a legislator in this city. Mr. Darrell Johnson, who was the principal, and Mr. Julius Kellal. A little, a whole lot of people in this room probably don't know him. He was graduated from IC Norcom. He was the first black player to play for Manhattan, Manhattan University. And he came from a family of 11 children. So he came a long ways. He was a professional basketball player, and he also coached wheelback, wheel, wheel... What is it? Wheelchair basketball for years. And these are the people that I would like for you to consider. Now, I know how it is as a school board member, but they name people bridges, streets, government buildings, so forth and so on. I think it ought to be, I don't know why, but I think it ought to be considered for our schools. My mother graduated from IC Norcom, and it's still Norcom. I did. My children did. I went to Brighton Elementary School. And to me, I don't know, it just looks like we ought to make a change. Therefore, I would like for y'all to consider it. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Crump.
Okay.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Good evening. My name is Amy Davis, and I am the Program Director at Community Outreach Coalition, Talent Search, and also the RESET Program, which stands for Remediation Effectively Supporting Educational Teachings. This program is the after-school remediation program to help students with the support of Portsmouth Public Schools students. We are able to help three of the middle schools, Crowdock, Waters, and Churchland Middle, and two of the elementaries, Douglas Park and Brighton. With these resources from the program, since we have started in October, the students were able to do hands-on activities such as culinary, cosmetology, drones, theater, and gardening, just to name a few. They have grown academically throughout the RESET Program. We would like to invite you all to Bright Elementary or Crowdock Middle School this coming Tuesday as the students harvest and prepare a snack that they have grown from their hydroponic garden. We would also like to invite you on April 29th to our college and career carnival that we're having for the community at Portsmouth City Park, 11 to 2 p.m. We are seeking continued support from Portsmouth Public Schools in their partnership, serving the students with remediation. Thank you for your patience and time for listening today.
Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you. And what time Tuesday?
Tuesday, 3 to 5. Anytime between 3 and 5 is that's when the after-school program is.
Gotcha. Do you guys have a social media page?
Yes. Uh, Community Outreach Coalition, Inc.
Inc., okay. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Ms. Futrell.
Yes, ma'am. Right here. How are you doing? Can you please repeat the schools for Tuesday?
Tuesday's Crowdock Middle School and Brighton Elementary.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Darrell Redman.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, Superintendent, Board Members, as well as community people. I'm here today, I don't know, Ms. I'm here today, I don't know, Ms. Clu, Ms. Atkinson sent y'all thing out, but we actually just graduated the Left Coast Leadership Academy in the city of Portsmouth, and we all had a craft project to do. So what we started with was a whole bunch of different things inside the city. Some were saying, let's do the baseball fields, let's do other things like that over. But a lot of us who do a lot of work in the community, me as well as Mr. Linwood and them, you know, we focus a lot on the youth in the community. And we knew that it would be hard to get directly to the youth. So what we decided was to address mental health. So we felt like if we went in and did the teachers' lounges over, that would get the teachers a greater sense of relaxation that can trickle down to the youth. So this past weekend, we took on all three middle schools in the city. Then we went in and did a total renovation and makeover of all the middle schools, actually. Principal here is right here. We went in. Thank you all for working with us to allow us go in there to have those schools vacant for us to get in. And we went back on Monday. I went back to all the schools Monday and spoke to all the principals, and they was overwhelmed by what happened. But we understand that mental health and addressing mental health is the number-one reason that our community is plagued by community violence. So we know that our teachers are a lot of time over work, over book, dealing with the trauma that's coming from the community. So as a part of a leadership group inside the city, we wanted to go in and make that over to give those teachers a sense of calm, a sense of peace, and a sense of relaxation. Because walking inside those teachers' lounges at first, ironically, he's here. But Waters was the best middle school that they had. So to be able to go in and see those teachers with a different sense of enthusiasm, a different sense of peace, and a different sense of calm, we thank you all and want to let y'all know that we are here to do whatever we can inside the school as well as on the ground to make Portsmouth a greater and better place. Thank you all for y'all's time.
Vice Jackson.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, thank you for choosing Portsmouth Public Schools and our teacher lounges as your project. Here in Portsmouth, we're short of financial resources, but we have a lot of human resources. And when human resources come together, then we do great things like this. I must say that Crowdock is my favorite one. Y'all literally took up the towels, y'all painted the walls. I mean, Crowdock looks like a massage parlor. Like, it's really zen. But, I mean, the other schools are great as well. But thank you, guys. And like you said, I did hear from a teacher, one teacher actually cried. Because going into teacher lounges, like you said, is their peace, is their moment to woo-saw. So that was an amazing project. And again, send our thanks to the Left Coast class.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Brenda Joseph.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Davis asked me to step forward tonight and speak on the teacher part of the Reset Program. I teach at Crowdock or Crowdick Middle, depending on who you talk to, you know, you'll get different pronunciations. And ours more specifically would be about 3:30 to 5:00 to come because the children, when they first come to the Reset Program, they go to the cafeteria and they get a snack. Because they've been at school all day, we're keeping them there till 5 o'clock. They need something to eat to keep their brain functioning. So after they have their snack, they go and they do a homework time. So whatever classwork the teacher has assigned that they didn't finish or specific homework activities, the teachers assist them with those. In our building, I work the program as the math teacher. Ms. Regio works the program as the English teacher. And the two of us coordinate together to make sure the children can get help in whatever area that they need help in for their homework. After about 20 minutes or so for homework, we move into our remediation activities. You heard about the tower gardens that they're growing. They're not just growing them, they assembled the units, they planted the seeds. They had to fill the tanks with water. They had to adjust the pH in the water, so they got to experiment with measuring it and doing the drops for the pH, and then comparing it to the strip that said what color it should be so that the pH would be right to grow the plants. They had to provide it with the nutrition because there's no soil. So it has to get minerals to eat and grow. And they are all thriving and looking very healthy. So, you know, they're growing kale, shard, arugula, basil, spring salad mix, things of that nature. And then we're gonna provide other things as you can come in and make your little salad for a snack. Other activities that we've done or are planning to do, some pasta's incoming, and they're going to make pasta cars. And they're gonna see how far their pasta cars can go and which one goes the farthest based on how they design it and build it. They have done scavenger hunts where they've used their phone or their Chromebook to go around the building looking for geometric figures. They have made foldables. They've done cut-and-paste activities to reinforce the concepts that they were learning during the day in the different subject areas. They have done relay races where they had problems that they got one at a time, and the answers were on ball-up pieces of paper scattered around the floor, and they had to solve their problem and then go search through the ball-up paper till they found the correct answer, some of which were blank. So, you know, they got a little, didn't like that a little bit too much. But, you know, it gave them something to continue to look forward to, and they weren't finishing it in a snap because all the answers were right there for them. They do interactive things where they can work with each other. They do competitions. They work independently and individually on certain things. Our main focus in the remediation piece are the reading and the math. And then we try to tie in the science, technology, art, anything like that whenever we can. They've worked with manipulatives for both English and math. So it's just something that the children that come, they enjoy. They can't wait for the next piece. The boys were really thrilled when the cosmetologist person came for them to see that it's not just girls doing hair. We actually had one of our young men that, he's ready to do his daughter's hair when he gets older, and he has a daughter. So, and they learned about how to sanitize the equipment that they use. So, you know, they get that hands-on experience. They cooked when the people came from the chef program. They actually brought the ingredients, and the children prepared and cooked their own little snack from those people. So, like I said, they're having fun, they're learning. The children that participate in the program religiously, their growth scores or their growth assessments that they took for the school showed improvement. So it is reaching them where we need it to reach them so that our scores can improve, which is the whole purpose behind the program. A secondary effect is it gives them something to do. Middle schools have the least to do in the community. They have the least to do out there. They're at that most vulnerable age. You know, elementary, you've got your parents who are super involved. High school, you know, they're older, they can handle a little bit more. Middle school is your neediest group, and this gives those children something to do. So once again, please come to either one of the schools on Tuesday. Make yourself your homegrown salad, speak with the children who are part of the program, and see what it's all about firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 7.1 to 7.5 is consent agenda, and I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Boone. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Futre?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Agenda item 8.1 is our monthly curriculum and instruction report.
Before you get started, I just want to make an announcement to everyone that Dr. Nicole DeVries is with us. She's, this is her first meeting, her fourth day as our new chief academic officer. So just wanted to give her a warm introduction tonight.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Thank you, Dr. Bracy.
Well, good evening, Chairman Patillo and Vice Chair Atkinson, school board members, and Dr. Bracy. I am thrilled to be here this evening to introduce myself to you and to the Portsmouth community. I am Nicole DeVries, and I'm the Chief Academic Officer for Portsmouth Public Schools. I started my position on Monday, as Dr. Bracy said. And I have spent this past several days getting to know the staff and curriculum and instruction, and I'm so very impressed by their enthusiasm and their expertise and their student-centered mindset. It's great to see, and I'm looking forward to working with them. In the next couple of weeks, I plan to visit schools to see all of the exciting work that students and staff are engaged in. And I look forward to working with the board and the Portsmouth staff and Portsmouth community to do all the great work together for our students. So with that said, this evening, as part of Arts in Our School Month, I have the honor of introducing the Senior Supervisor of Performing Arts, Ms. Gwen Jenkins, who will provide some more information about the special guest performers that we have with us this evening. Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you, Dr. DeVries. Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the school board, and Dr. Bracy, good evening. I am honored to stand before you tonight in recognition of Music in Our Schools Month. The 2023 Music in Our Schools Month theme is "Music is All of Us." We are most fortunate in our school division on the secondary level to formally offer all of the performing arts, that is dance, music, and theater. Consequently, I present to you a modified theme for this evening. The performing arts is all of us. More and more, the approach of likening the relationship between a shepherd and his or her sheep haunted me as I considered tonight's presentation. The shepherd, which is the educator, is responsible for creating, establishing, and nurturing a thirst for learning that can only be quenched by feeding the sheep or students the best that can be offered. For 45 years, I have stood before the Portsmouth community, sharing the benefits that performing arts education provides, ranging from increased personal and academic achievement to serving as the building blocks of creating a positive society. And this is my 25th year standing before the school board on this particular night, sharing. So thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to ask the students now to come forward and help me. And if you all would move quickly into your positions. And as they move, I'm going to continue to talk because of time. I want to get them home so that they can continue to make all these wonderful A's in all of their classes. And we have to adjust with the way that we are standing. And Ms. Gray, if you would kindly plug me up now. I didn't want anyone to trip over the cord. Before you is a part of the Port Town Magic Show Choir. And I selected them simply because it was easier to get them here and that type of thing and prepare them for what we're about to demonstrate to you. These students hail from all school division high schools. And what I'd like for you to do is I call your school's name, just hold your hand up, and then bring it down. Students from Churchland High School, would you kindly raise your hand? Manor High School? IC Norcom High School? The levels of academic achievement differ among these students. Students with a current GPA of 3.7 or higher, would you kindly raise your hand? Keep your hands up, please. Those with a 3.3 or higher, raise your hands. And those with a 3.0 or higher, raise your hands. Hands down. As I indicated earlier, this is just a portion of the group. We have several students who are active members of this ensemble who play sports. And tonight, they all had games, so we're missing at least six people. So the group is much larger, as you can see. Students who plan to go to institutions of higher learning upon graduation, would you kindly step forward? Okay? Now, we want to differentiate even more. Those of you who plan to major in one of the arts, whether it's language, music, theater, dance, visual art, that type of thing, would you kindly raise your hand? Okay, bring it down. Those who have an interest in architecture, your hand? Business, education? One of the sciences, whether it's biology, earth science, medicine, nursing, mathematics? How about computer technology? I believe some of our athletes had interests in those areas. Okay, now I want you to step back in your places. As you can see, the members are very, very different in many, many ways. However, one point I want to drive home is this. This group stands firmly united in the following ways. It represents Portsmouth Public Schools, not separate schools and zones. It values every member equally and respects the self-worth of the individual. Last but not least, it is a unified entity in relentless and passionate pursuit of perfection. And what you're gonna see here tonight is really a rehearsal for us because we have not gotten to the point where we need to be for Dr. Bracy in July. But we're working, and we appreciate you all being a wonderful audience for us to practice. Elements of every discipline is present in what we're about to perform. We will have components of math, science, language, arts, history, and physical education. And then all of this is going to be fulfilled by adding the human piece of emotion and feeling, something that only the performing arts can provide. One thing about the performing arts, every time you do something again, it's gonna be a little different. It's never the exact same thing. The students selected by the Office of Social Studies, engaged in the Martin UN this February with a focus of peacekeeping and human rights. Last year's Black History Month's theme was a focus on wellness and health in the African-American community. And tonight, the performing arts students are dressed in green. A salute to St. Patrick's Day, as well as the ideas of prosperity, money, health, hope, and overall well-being. Portsmouth Public Schools Port Town Magic Show Choir will now perform a three-minute excerpt that will reflect on these motifs. As the old adage states, "The proof is in the pudding." After all, the performing arts is all of us. And that is it.
Board members, Ms. Boone?
So I just want to say that this, watching you, Ms. Jenkins brings back so many memories. Because as a little girl in your chorus class, initially we wanted to be in chorus. We wanted to go to Kings of Manion. And that was the initial goal. But you weren't going to Kings of Manion if you didn't learn the songs, if you didn't learn the moves. And you genuinely made us want to be a better person. So this is so rewarding to watch this. So I just want to say, I love it.
I taught you too.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And I'm glad Ms. Boone attended chorus class. But I started my choral career back in 1989 under Ms. Jenkins. And I was one of her prized pupils.
You was.
And I could have went to all district, but I turned down, let one of my classmates do it instead. But no, but seriously, you all are amazing. Thank you for your passion, Ms. Jenkins. You are outstanding. Thank you so much. Y'all have an amazing night.
Thank you.
Thank you all. That was great. I am but a small voice. Where are the tomatoes? All right, agenda item nine point one is our monthly report. Superintendent Dr. Bracy?
Thank you Chairman Patillo. Ms. Jenkins, before you go, I want to say that if they get any better, I don't know if I'll be able to take what's going to happen in July. Okay, all right. All right. So good evening again Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson and Board members. It's officially spring season, which means we have plenty of news to share. First up, applications are currently being accepted for the division's Fine Arts Academy. The academy, which is housed at Churchland High School, offers honors level curriculum in visual arts to prepare students for AP studio art courses as well as college and career opportunities. All ninth, 10th and 11th graders who love visual arts can apply for this opportunity. This is a division-wide program, so transportation will be provided for students who want to attend the academy but don't attend Churchland. You can visit the arts page on PPSK12.us for more information. Applications are due by April 7. Speaking of Churchland High School, Portsmouth Public Schools is again hosting the PPS Runs It 3K Color Run at Churchland that will raise funds to provide swim lessons for PPS families. The run would take place on May 20 at 9:00 a.m., but participants must register by Tuesday, March 30. The registration fee is $20 for adults. But here's some good news. There's no registration fee for PPS students and their parents or guardians. All student participants must have an adult designate with them. You can access the online registration form in your email inbox or through our website. Next up, preschool registration is almost here. Preschool registration is going to kick off Tuesday, April 4. As you know, there are a number of requirements for our preschool program and necessary paperwork families need to have. So our Office of Title I and Special Programs will be scheduling registration appointments to personally walk families through the application. You can schedule your appointment now on preschool registration on our preschool registration webpage. Tonight, I also have a security update for you. As we've shared throughout these meetings, we've ordered new weapon detection systems for all of our middle and high schools. This is an effort we've been working on for some time. In fact, this system was first piloted at Manor High School back in December of 2021. The systems have been delivered. Staff will begin training on them next week with a full implementation schedule for Monday, April 3. All secondary school families will receive more information about this tomorrow. But we're excited to start utilizing these systems in our division. Before I close, I have a few calendar reminders for those watching at home. Next Wednesday, March 29, is a staff development day, which means it's an early release day for all students. Then we have another early release day, Friday, April 7, for all students, with spring break taking place Monday, April 10 through Friday, April 14. That's right, can you believe it? We're two weeks away from spring break. We will be back in school Monday, April 17. With that, Chairman Patillo, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Agenda item nine point two is a roll call vote, consideration of the School Board's proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2324. We have had this budget for a few weeks now and it's been in your board docs and reviewed. I would just like to say that I'm extremely proud of the budget. The budget includes many items, some being an additional 5% raise for all staff. That would be an additional $6.7 million to the budget. An additional 1% bonus for all returning employees, which totally be another $800,000 add to the budget. Last year, our focus was on transportation salaries and we increased it near 20% last year. This year, we're looking at supporting auxiliary services. There's additional 5% raise on top of the 5% we're giving to all staff for all custodial services, building maintenance, warehouse and food service staff. So that's an additional $300,000 to the budget. So thank you all for agreeing to put the needs of our staff and their families in this budget. And I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Dr. Cotton. Is any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
I just have one question. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on, and sorry to interrupt you earlier, but just regarding the state budget revenue error, there hasn't been a decision or has there been a decision on that? Just wanted to get a quick update.
Good evening Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board members, Dr. Bracy. No ma'am, just to give you an update on that, I'm glad you asked. The state, when they adjourned for this General Assembly session, they adjourned without doing a crossover budget that was approved. So everything that is in front of the General Assembly right now is a blank slate. They basically reverted back to the budget that they approved back in last June. They presented what they call a skinny budget. That skinny budget was basically the budget that they approved for the BIM of '22 through '24 last June with a few added changes. One of those added changes was they plugged the hole or they held us harmless for that sales tax error in FY '2223, which is the current year only. They did nothing for '2324, which to us was about $2.1 million, nor did they include any of the governor's proposals, which this budget is presented on, the Senate or the House proposals that they put forward. So right now, we're without a proposed state budget, to be honest with you. Everything you've heard from the General Assembly that they said they were going to do, it is null and void right now until they come back. I believe on April the 12th, if that has been scheduled, to come back and reconvene and then try to come to some agreement on this budget.
Ms. Thomas?
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Paul. Don't leave yet.
Sure.
So with that being said, if I'm understanding correctly, will the presented statement of needs that we have requested, will we be short $2.1 million depending on the decision from the state? Am I?
I don't know. It depends on what the governor and the legislature does when they come back. Right now, the only budget we have that is on paper that has been at least presented is the governor's budget, which is why we use that budget. The Senate, the House came up with proposals. They did not come to any agreement. So I couldn't tell you today whether the revenue that we knew of on December the 16th from the governor is going to be what they come up with or something different. So we have to use what we know as best, which is the governor's budget, in my opinion. So I can't give you an answer to that, I hate to say.
No, that's fine. Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Sputrill?
Yes.
Ms. Schumake?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item nine point three, Board Member comments. Do we have any at this time? Ms. Schumake?
Thank you Chairman Patillo. I just have one. I just want to encourage and remind everyone to, as far as the parents and guardians, to go to your school counselors and make sure that you are aware and understand what scholarship opportunities are there for your children. One in particular, I just want to throw out there. Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has scholarships out there and the deadline is Friday, April 7, 2023. This is not the only scholarship opportunity. So I just want to encourage all parents and guardians to please go to your school counselors and inquire as to what scholarship opportunities are out there. Thank you so much Chairman.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes, thank you Chair. I just wanted to say one thank you to Lauren's not here today, but Lauren and her team, as well as Dr. Bracy for taking the recommendation from the last meeting to basically add an update to our Portsmouth Public School website, including all of our current events. And basically the media advisory that she normally sends out to the media and ourselves. It's now available online. It's a great page for the public, the community, parents, students to kind of keep up with what's happening and all the many great events going on around the school and different performances and so forth. So I encourage everyone to check out the Portsmouth Public School website and you'll see a page where all of those current events are listed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. And just so happens Lauren's not here, but Diane is here. She's our webmaster. She's the one that posted everything you're talking about. So she's here.
Great job. Thank you.
Ms. Boone?
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that congratulations to IC Norcom. They now have a key club and they have about 43 students to join.
If there are no further comments, thank you all again for joining us on this evening. This board meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.